We'll start off with a very short call, roll call, starting on that.
Clark, C.R. Nelson, council member.
Mr. Mayor.
Chris Estes, council member.
Caroline Hale, council member.
Steve Harriman, police department.
Donna Davis, chief financial officer.
Andy Seville, assistant fire chief.
Jenny McCoslin, assistant city administrator.
J.T. Klaus, city attorney.
Rick Lanzers, assistant director of public works.
Susan Reiner, city clerk.
Mark Dettler, city administrator.
All right, item three is invocation. Mr. Pastor Brad Tuggles here with East Evangelical, right? Yeah. Thank you for coming.
I pray. Our Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you especially for the freedoms that we enjoy in this country, this state, and in this city. We pray a blessing on those who serve and protect. We thank you for them and for their families. And we pray a blessing on these proceedings tonight, on all those who volunteer so much time, and on the decisions that are made that would further the causes of this city and the causes of freedom. We give you thanks in Jesus' name. Amen.
Do you stand with us for the pledge of allegiance?
Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number five this evening is the public forum. Is there anyone here that wishes to address the council? All right, we'll move on to item number six, which is the acceptance of the agenda. I see, I see the bid tabulation here. Is there any additional items?
We updated a couple items on your computer. I'm gonna have to have the city clerk help me with this. We obviously gave you the bid tabs for the PBC bids tonight. We also added a...
Debt schedule.
A debt schedule related to that, but didn't we add one other item for the Prairie Creek?
For the Prairie Creek, we added an ordinance and a petition that goes along with that ordinance, which is electronically you have it, but I've also printed copies here if somebody would like those.
I'll take the paper copy.
And if that item, the city attorney has reviewed it and we've just added it.
It's fine.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to accept the agenda as presented with the additional items of the bid tab, the items for the debt schedule and for the Prairie Creek items that have been submitted.
Thank you.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion by C.R., second by Chris to approve, excuse me, to accept the agenda as modified. Further discussion. Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Move on to item number seven. We have a request for some more street closures. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. I've got requests for two street closures, one at 1,000 Terradyne Circle. And this one's actually the one on Crescent Lakes. And that's gonna be about 300 east Crescent Lakes. And it's gonna be closed at both sides to the traffic company rerouted around the lake.
This is for the national night out, right?
National night out, yes, sir.
August 1st?
Yep.
Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the request to close the street.
I'll second.
Second by Chris, second by C.R. to approve the street closures as presented. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Move on to item number eight. I believe we are receiving an award this evening. I see Mr. Lackey back there. You have a visitor with you?
Mayor, city council, thanks for having us. My name's Sean Melius. I am the current president of the Kansas chapter of APWA. Joining me tonight is Jeff Lackey. He's been involved with the APWA board too. He is also the, one of the consultant on this project that you were receiving the award for. The project is 159th Street from the KTA Bridge to 21st Street. I do wanna talk a little bit about it before I present you with the award. I wanna recognize the other entities that were involved with the project. The consultant was Trans Systems, the contractor was Don Linger Construction, and Sedwick County had a part in the project too. Couple of the items that I wanna highlight as far as items that set this project apart from some of the other submissions. One of them was construction schedule management and control techniques that were used. Another was environmental consideration, including special steps taken to preserve and protect environment. And the final one is community relations. That shows a number of different things. The consultant put together a decent set of plans, that the contractor was willing to work with the adjacent property owners, and that your staff did a good job to review it. So with that, I will present you guys with the award on behalf of the Kansas chapter of APWA.
Rick?
Awesome.
Do I have to accept that?
Sure.
I knew you'd do that. Well, we appreciate it.
Caroline, don't you think we need to get down there?
Always happy to win awards for our streets. I do have one question for you. Okay. What is APAWC? What's that acronym for?
American Public Works Association. It's APWA.
Well, I think it's inappropriate our public works director is not here this year. We'll accept this award on his behalf. Thank you for coming.
Okay, we'll move on to item number nine, which is the consent agenda. Add us items 9.1 through 9.9. Is there a motion to approve those?
So move.
Second.
Motion by C.R., second by Caroline to approve the consent agenda as presented. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 10, the 2018 budget. You gonna give us some highlights, Mr. Dettler?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, as you recall, we've discussed the budget, I think, in three different meetings, including the workshop. And we worked together with the departments, administration did, to put together this budget. And I would just like to give you a quick summary before we open up the public forum for anybody is, I've talked to you about this before, our motor vehicle tax receipts are going up $50,000. Our new property tax without a mill increase is going up about $308,000. And total revenue for, just between motor vehicle and property taxes is, you know, close to $360,000 there. Next slide, just kinda talk about the overall statistical impact of the budget. We have an overall budget increase of 5%. Now, if you deduct transfers, is another way people analyze the budget, it's less than 1%. So there's some variation there, but I'd just like to emphasize again that the general fund is increasing 5.2% in line with what our property tax revenue is doing. So I think that's the more accurate number. We've increased some things for police and fire particularly. We have it in the budget next year to repair the parking lots at those two facilities. And again, property tax revenue is up 5.5%, primarily due to an increase in assessed valuation from 136.6 million to 144.17 million dollars. Go to the next slide, we can talk about a little bit of some of the, what we consider highlights of next year's budget is, we're currently projecting the sales tax that was put on to pay for the street shop, the restroom, and the fire truck to sunset December 31st of 2018, approximately 21 months ahead of schedule. And then our, we wanna say that our wastewater expansion fund continues to do well. At the end of 2016, it had over $6.5 million. That's an anticipation between 2020 and 2025 of us having to upgrade our plant. We're wanting to put it off as long as possible, but we certainly have made a great amount of collection in order to reduce any burden that our residents will have in terms of a fee increase to pay for that sewer plant. And finally, we continue to accumulate money in the street sales tax fund. I would say that some of that's going to diminish due to the project on Southwest 120th and a few other projects we're talking about. But right now, that's a pretty good, healthy fund balance in the street sales tax fund. Finally, oh, excuse me, there's gonna be one more slide after this. No, we can go back. We have a payment for the amphitheater scheduled that actually the debt service was 1.15 million today. We're paying that with a little bit of monies from various funds, but the bulk of it is being paid for by this bond issue tonight, which real quickly, I just wanna mention that our plan coming into this was our current PBC debt payment for Central Park Lodge and some 13th Street improvements was about $157,000. Next year, we'll have a drop in that payment, and this interest payment for the amphitheater will come on. But I say our overall debt for that particular set of issues will drop $20,000. Then in 2019, it'll drop another $10,000. Then in 2020, we'll be down to approximately $110,000 to $115,000 in our debt payment. So overall, our debt payment burden is going down. We were scheduled to have these paid off, but it's well within our budget. And I remind the council again that we're paying for this with revenues from the cellular tower rentals, the fireworks, and the liquor tax, which in 2006, when we were starting to pay some of this debt, was approximately $100,000. And that has grown to over $160,000. So we have revenues from those three sources to cover this payment, and then, you know, probably pay for some additional park improvements at some point. So I think we're in good shape in terms of the budgeting on this amphitheater project. Yorktown Road to U.S. 454 to Douglas is a project we really strongly want to work on. We're still have some preliminary planning we're doing on that, but that is a project we'd look to try to get kicked off in 2018. And then we are doing South Endover Road, Calvake Lane to Southwest 120th. It's about a $6.5 million project, but Wampa was a major sponsor of that, close to $5 million of that funding, and the rest we paid for by the city's sales tax. We don't plan on issuing any debt on that project. And then the next...
Can I have a question?
Flashback?
Yes, on New Yorktown Road, how does the sewer fund get involved?
We are planning to run some utilities in conjunction with helping that, in theory, that development kicking off. So we have some, we have some sewer we'd like to run. I think we're talking about possibly having to run that under 400, correct? To extend it. So...
So that would be contingent upon whatever improvements?
Right, and, and the bulk of that is paving. I mean, we're talking about less than $400,000 from the sewer fund for that, so... But, but we were planning on utilizing that as much as we can for that particular issue.
That makes sense.
And the last thing I wanna mention in, in conjunction, but not only for the amphitheater, we're have an events coordinator position in there. This was paid for primarily by the fact that we did not place our assistant rec director, but instead wanted to have someone come in and focus on cultural issues instead of purely athletic issues. The office at Central Park Lodge with the recreation director, we're looking at a salary of between $55,000 to $60,000. 50% of that salary will come from the convention of visitors bureau, 10% from the festivals fund, which essentially pays for a GAD right now. Balance of the salary, again, comes from the assistant recreation director position. And that position will report to the assistant city administrator. So those are the major highlights of our budget. If the council has any more questions, or we'd rather just hear from the public at this point, we'd be glad to go either direction.
I have one more question. What's the, so if somebody says to me, what's the City of Andover's budget? In other words, what's the amount of money overall?
I say 25 million with, with transfers, approximately 22 million. The issue with the transfer is you're counting money twice technically, because it's going from one fund to the other. But if you look at our bottom line, the state budget form, you had about $25 million.
Why don't you, why don't you break out your bond and interest? What is our operating budget?
I would, I would, you know, I have to...
I think that's more germane question that people are gonna ask.
Well, and, and not only that, you have $6.5 million, you know, sitting in other, other funds and stuff like that, so...
That's what I'm saying. What is your operating budget?
You might have stopped me on that one. I would, I would, you know, put it at about the $15 million range, but I would like to have time to look at the question, 'cause it's been brought up before, and I have to get into how I define operating budget, and I like to go...
So when is the 22 million? It includes all the payments?
Right, we have a transfer that goes from the, one big transfer that goes from the general fund to the PBC payment on the street shop for the sales tax. That's approximately a million dollars. We have some transfers. We have this sewer fund back to the general fund. And, you know, some money that goes from the street sales tax fund to the bond and interest fund. I mean, you could, you could go on and on with the list.
You have a number, Donna?
I think the 15 that he's talking about, by the time you think of operating, if you're including the...
If you're including the operating for wastewater and the enterprise funds along with the general fund, it's probably about 15.
That answer the question?
Yes, thank you.
Any questions?
Yes, Mayor, I have one for, for you, Mark. I am very, very happy, and I know we'll get to this on the PBC meeting, about the park improvement fund and rolling over the bond, and we're lowering the payment. And obviously, the liquor, cell phone, cell tower, and fireworks revenue is going up. So if it's, 2016 revenue was 176, and our payments are gonna be substantially below that, I'm just curious, where does that extra money go?
We always have plenty of park projects that we come in...
I know, but it goes through the park fund, right?
Stay in the park. That, that money specifically is designated for the park.
So as long as the bond is paid from revenue from those sources, then the extra can go in that fund as it should.
And more importantly, to me anyway, is no property tax is paying for the, for the payment.
Okay, that's good. Awesome, thank you.
Any other questions?
Okay, this time I'd like to open up a public hearing concerning the 2018 budget and ask if anybody would like to speak. There being none, I will close the public hearing, and we'll move on to the adoption of the budget.
Yeah, we need to first a motion to adopt that we are increasing our property tax revenue. What's interesting, the city attorney and I had a question about whether or not we still need to do this. As a safety measure, I would like us to do it this year, and we will continue to work with the league and those other interested parties to see if we can forego this in the next years due to the fact that they've already created the mill levy lid going to an election. But this year, we would like you to do it to be just on the extremely cautious side on the issue. I would rather have them do the ordinance, 'cause it authorizes the, the tax revenue increase. I'm sorry, we probably have that flipped.
We have it flipped.
Sorry about that.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance, we don't have a number yet, so 2018 budget increase in tax revenue.
Motion by Caroline, second by Sherry to approve the 2018 budget increase in tax revenue ordinance, ordinance as presented. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And then next, the actual adoption of the budget.
I will also move to approve the 2018 budget for the City of Andover as presented.
Second.
Motion by Caroline, second by Chris to approve the 2018 budget as presented. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, the city clerk has asked me to remind you that you all stay around and sign the budget tonight after the completion of the meeting.
Okay, I believe this is where we need to have an executive session. If somebody would be so kind to call that for approximately 15 minutes to include the governing body, the city attorney, the city administrator, the public works director, I guess assistant, don't need him. And the CFO, for the justification of matters that would be deemed privileged in an attorney-client relationship for the purpose of discussing contractual negotiations and pending litigation.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Sherry, second by Chris to go into executive session. Approximately 15 minutes to include the governing body, the city attorney, the city administrator, assistant city administrator, and the CFO. Oh, for justification of matters that would be deemed privileged in an attorney-client relationship, and for the purpose of discussing contract negotiations and pending litigation. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
...
Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Unfortunately, and I'm sorry, we need a few more minutes in there. So if somebody would be so kind as to call another executive session for fifteen minutes uh to include the governing body, the city administrator, the city attorney, the assistant city administrator, the financial.
Officer.
Uh, officer and to discuss um contract negotiations with a justification of these matters would be deemed privileged in an attorney-client relationship.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Caroline, second by Sherri to go into executive session. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Fifteen minutes. Any opposed? Motion carries. Motion carries. Motion carries. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. I need a motion to come out of executive session.
So moved.
Motion by Chris, second by Sherri to come out of executive session. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Prairie Creek Third Edition.
Or Phase Three.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Prairie Creek Phase Three.
Mr. Mayor, you have a long list of approvals you need to do in association with this subdivision development. And you could go down that list and see it. I don't know if you, if you have questions about each specific item. Of course, we have plenty of people here who can, can answer them, but I think we've laid out motions for you on each of them, and I think we would like, I ask our attorneys, separate motions on all these items, correct, from adopting the...
Look, some of them require separate motions because they're ordinances, so you just as well do them separately.
Eleven point one. We're looking at accepting the final PUD.
It's paragraph twelve point one. Mr. Mayor, I would move to adopt Prairie Creek Third Phase, I'm sorry, the final PUD and dedications within the Prairie Creek Third Phase to the city of Andover, Kansas, as recommended and approved by the Planning Commission.
Second.
Motion by CR, second by Caroline to accept the final PUD as presented. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, on item twelve point two, I would move to approve the developers' agreement between Prairie Creek Homes LLC and the city of Andover, Kansas, for the purpose of setting forth conditions and requirements for the development of Prairie Creek Third Phase, and authorize the mayor to sign such an agreement.
Second.
Motion by CR, second by Caroline to approve the developers' agreement as presented. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Item twelve point three.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to accept the petitions for water, sanitary sewer, paving, and storm drainage as submitted by Prairie Creek Homes LLC for improvements to Prairie Creek Third Phase.
Second.
Motion by CR, second by Chris to approve the petitions as presented. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, this is the appropriate place to insert the request for reallocation petition that the city clerk provided that you added to your agenda. So this would be where you would accept the petition for reallocation of the specials on the unplatted tract, which is not on your agenda.
Item twelve point four, right?
So it's two separate items now?
Accepting the petition which authorizes you to adopt the ordinance is a separate item, yes.
If, Mr. Mayor, if I heard that correctly, I would move to adopt an ordinance reallocating the special assessments for...
Let me, I'm sorry, let me stop you. What you're gonna have to do prior to adopting the ordinance, which is on the agenda, is accept the new petitions for the reala- reallocation of the special assessments from the unplatted property first, and then we can do your ordinance.
Which number are you talking about?
It's not on your agenda. It's, would be item twelve point three five. That's the problem. This is the additional agenda item that's on...
Okay. Why don't you restate what it is that we're...
I think the motion that somebody needs to make is to accept the new petitions requesting for the reallocation of certain special assessments, specifically from the unplatted portion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by CR, second by Chris to accept the new petitions as presented. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now you can make your motion on that ordinance, please.
Item twelve point four, I would move to adopt an ordinance, amending ordinance fifteen forty-four, requesting the reallocation of the remainder of a portion of the special assessments levied by ordinance fifteen forty-four.
Second.
Motion by CR, second by Chris to approve the ordinance as presented. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
You might have this edition finished by the time we're done here.
Twelve point five.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to accept the restrictive covenant and temporary easement for Prairie Creek Third Phase to the city of Andover, Kansas, as presented.
Second.
Motion by CR, second by Chris to accept the covenant and temporary easement as presented. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Twelve point six.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to adopt a resolution of advisability authorizing the creation of a special benefit district and certain internal improvements in Prairie Creek Third Phase to the city of Andover, Kansas, including the method of assessment for such benefit district. Is that a, is that...
That's a good motion, yes.
Second.
Motion by Chris, excuse me, motion by CR, second by Chris to adopt this resolution as presented. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Twelve point seven.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to adopt an ordinance authorizing certain internal improvements to the third phase of Prairie Creek addition as previously authorized by resolution of advisability for the city of Andover, Kansas, and authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds and temporary notes for the financing of the costs of such improvements.
Second.
Motion by CR, second by Caroline to adopt the ordinance as presented. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
And finally, Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve an agreement with Baughman Company, PA, and the city of Andover to provide engineering services for Prairie Creek Third Phase to the city of Andover, Kansas, in an amount not to exceed one hundred fifty-seven thousand nine hundred dollars, and authorize the mayor to sign the same.
Second.
Motion by CR, second by Chris to approve the agreement with Baughman Company as presented. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I'm done.
Item number twelve, vacation case VA two thousand seventeen dash thirteen, excuse me. Vacation case VA two thousand seventeen dash zero one, this is concerning one thousand two East Waterview Drive.
If we have some specific...
Do we need to have a public hearing for a vacation case?
I'm not recalling that. I could say something that said, I thought the public, the Planning Commission did such...
The Planning Commission, well, not the Planning Commission, but the Board of Zoning Appeals. Do I need to have a public hearing for this vacation case?
I don't believe so.
You sure?
Zoning and special use.
Okay. All right. Tell us what's going on here. Who's handling this? Rick, you doing this?
Does the city engineer wanna chime in here?
Steve coming up.
Steve Anderson, city engineer, and as I recall, there was a structural wall inadvertently built in encroachment on, on a drainage and utility easement, and the owner exercised his right to petition for vacation to allow that to continue to exist rather than be removed. In that process, all the utility companies were notified, since they have a legal right to exist, and use that easement for maintenance. I believe the petitioner's engineer worked out arrangements with all those utility companies, so they do not object. There was also a question about drainage, since it's platted for drainage purposes, and we received a letter and a plan from the petitioner's engineer asserting that the drainage will not be impeded. And so I think the quote is, "Staff knows no reason not to approve the vacation."
Questions? Motions?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the vacation order as presented.
Second.
By Chris, second by Sherri to approve vacation case VA two thousand seventeen dash zero one concerning one thousand two East Waterview Drive as presented. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item fourteen, waterline agreement with the city of Wichita.
Actually, the city attorney reviewed this and helped prepare a good portion of this agreement, so I'll let him handle this item.
This is for an agreement to share the expenses of a city of Wichita waterline that runs under an intersection that the city will be improving, and indicates their responsibility to pay for their waterline as part of an overall relocation project, which the city would bid and then beld the city of Wichita for. I don't believe there's any issues associated with the agreement. So we bid as one project, Andover would pay for it, and Wichita would reimburse their, their costs for their waterline.
Is there a motion to approve that agreement with the city of Wichita?
So moved.
Motion by CR, second by Sherri to approve the waterline agreement for Andover Road and Hundred Twentieth Street South with the city of Wichita as presented. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item fifteen, looking at adopting the two thousand seventeen standard traffic ordinances, ordinance, excuse me.
I'd ask the city attorney to explain these next two items too, but if Lieutenant Harriman wants to weigh in on anything, I think we should have the police department comment if they so desire.
Each year, on the next two items, the city adopts the league's statement of a standard traffic ordinance and a uniform public offense code that is used by most cities. The city has some uniquenesses and changes, and those are all maintained, but the new standard traffic ordinance and the new UPOC reflect the changes in state law so that the ordinances within the city of Andover will be in compliance. The big change in the standard traffic ordinance is that they've increased the fine for driving without a seatbelt from ten dollars to thirty dollars and more if you're under eighteen years of age. You also need to have a light on the back of your bicycles if you're driving between sunset and sunrise now, a red light on the back of your bicycles. So that's the change in the standard traffic ordinance.
Not just a reflector light, you mean an actual operating light?
I'd prefer not to answer that question because I don't know the answer to it, but I believe it's a light.
It's lamps.
And if you, if you have to have a lamp, and if, if you don't have that as an alternative, you can wear one of these clothing devices that flash. So I actually believe a light is required now.
That's fair.
Okay. So we need a motion to adopt the two thousand seventeen standard traffic ordinance as presented.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Sherri, second by Chris to adopt the standard traffic ordinance as presented. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And we need another motion to adopt the Uniform Public Offense Code as presented.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt the ordinance enacting the two thousand seventeen Uniform Public Offense Code and amending chapter thirteen, article one, section thirteen, one oh one, and thirteen, one oh two of the code of the city of Andover.
Second.
Motion by Chris, second by CR to... Motion by Chris, second by CR, to adopt the ordinance concerning the UPOC as presented. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 16.
I believe it's item 17, Mr. Mayor.
17, yeah, sorry.
This is an ordinance approving the lease with the Public Building Commission. In a moment, you will hear about the Public Building Commission's financing, the terms of that financing, and the sale that occurred today, but this is an item necessary for the city to approve a lease with the Public Building Commission in order for that financing to occur.
Questions?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt an ordinance approving the issuance of $1,150,000 aggregate principal amount of the Andover Public Building Commission taxable revenue bond, Series A 2017, for the purpose of providing funds to acquire, construct, furnish, and equip a municipal amphitheater, related appurtenances, prescribing the form and authorizing the execution of an eighth supplemental lease by and between the PBC and the city, and authorizing the execution of certain agreements and support documents.
Second.
Motion by Chris, second by CR, to adopt the ordinances as presented. Excuse me. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Caroline.
Before we go on, I want to back up while it's still kind of in my mind. On the traffic ordinance that we just adopted, we were talking about the bicycles. Okay, here's my question. Technically, bicycles are supposed to be on the street, but then we have these sidewalks that are hike bike trails. Are we talking about the bicycle on the street only, or does it include bicycles on bike trails?
I believe it would include bicycles in the traffic way, which would include the sidewalk.
Okay, so I just wondered if it had to do with street traffic. So...
I think it's more directed towards that, but it would also include anything in the traffic way.
We could make it easier just to...
Right.
Something that could come up, I think.
I would have to disagree with you on that interpretation. I think it's specifically for streets.
Yeah, we'll have to look at that, Mr. Mayor. My inclination was the same. The standard traffic ordinances exist on public streets. I believe what he was saying is that the normal sidewalks are within the street right of way, and so the normal sidewalks are in the street. I believe the question was about specifically the bike trail, and I quite frankly, I just quite frankly don't know if that meets the definition of traffic way, which is, I think, the distinction that the police department was trying to make. So we can double check that for you and let you know for sure.
Well, technically, we've all agreed in this town that we just assume see children, kids, bicycles, whatever people like me, on the sidewalk with bicycles as opposed to in the street. But I just was curious because, you know, I know there are some that are technically designated bike bike.
Lieutenant Harriman is absolutely correct about the sidewalks because they're on the street.
Trafficway, and then we have our hike bike paths that are outside of it.
Yeah, correct. I was not talking about like Red Bud Trail. I'm talking about the sidewalk that runs along the roadway.
Okay. And again, it would be just the safest to have it everywhere, but just a question.
Somebody needs to recess the city council meeting and call to order the meeting of the Public Building Commission, please. Please.
So move.
Second.
Motion by CR, second by Chris, to recess the Andover City Council meeting and call the Public Building Commission meeting. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Madam President.
Welcome. We will call to order the Public Building Commission of the city of Andover, starting with roll call on my left.
Sherry Geisler, Commissioner.
Clark C.R. Nelson, Commissioner.
And Lawrence, Commissioner.
Chris Estes, President.
Caroline Hale, Commissioner.
Thank you. And we have before us the meeting minutes of the Public Building Commission of June 27, 2017, included in our packet, if everyone has reviewed those or has any comments.
Madam President, I would move to approve the minutes for June 27, 2017, as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by CR and a second by Caroline to approve the PBC meeting minutes of June 27. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. So our next item is item 4.1, and that is the amphitheater bond sale and issuance of the taxable revenue bonds. And we have on the bench a bid tab with the blue header here, and we've also got a debt schedule that we talked about, both of them. Well, the debt schedule we talked about in council meeting, but we have the bid tab, so.
Madam President, Mr. Varnberg with Piper Jaffrey is here as the city's financial advisor, and, you know, obviously I'd like to talk about the bids, but I'd also like to talk a little bit about the current bond environment. And actually, he and bond counsel had to do significant work to get quite a few things ready for us to get three bids on this. We're very happy with the rate. I would just compare it to about a year and a half ago, we did a taxable bond issue for the burial of the power lines. It was at about 3.2% for 15 years. It's 3.4% for, so, you know, pretty close together. We thought rates would go up significantly more, but I'll let Mr. Varnberg talk about the process of the sale and the actual bids.
Good evening, everyone. Greg Varnberg with Piper Jaffrey, financial advisor to the city and the PBC. And appreciate that introduction. We did have a very good bond sale today, and the results of the bond sale actually exceeded our expectations in several categories, so I'm happy to share the results with you. But as you may recall from prior bond issues, the process that we go through in working with the administration and your bond attorney is to draft the preliminary official statement, which is a document sent out to bidders and ultimately to the bond investors, work with the rating agency to have a bond rating assigned to the financing, coordinate the publication of a notice of sale, and preparation of the legal documents by your bond attorney. And then once all of that information is ready, we distribute that to potential bidders, notify them of a date and time on which we will be taking competitive sale bids for the purchase of the bonds. And the sale results deadline was at 11 o'clock this morning, and we did have very good results. But before I move into the results, I wanted to share with you the rating that was assigned by Standard and Poor's. And it's important to note that Standard and Poor's, with the new tax lid policy in Kansas, has taken a position that PBC bond issues that are subject to the tax lid will receive a rating one notch lower than the general obligation rating of the city. And the assignment of a AA minus rating to this PBC bond issue is in no way a negative reflection, or a downgrade, or anything negative related to the city. In fact, as part of the rating process, Standard and Poor's affirmed the AA existing rating for the city's general obligation rating. And so they did affirm your existing rating. There was really no change in the rating. This happens to be your first PBC bond issue that you've had issued and a rating assigned under the tax lid. But I did want to point out a couple of things related to the rating because you should be very proud of that AA rating. There's very few cities in Kansas or even throughout the country that move into the AA category for a bond rating, and so you should be very proud of that. But also, when you look at the rating report released by Standard and Poor's, and this is the information given to bidders and bond investors, they make comments such as, "Strong economy in the city, strong management with good financial policies and practices, very strong budgetary flexibility, very strong liquidity, and strong institutional framework." And those are all things that are within the control of the city council and the administration, and they're very positive comments printed by Standard and Poor's and received by the bond investors that are ultimately buying your bonds at the interest rates that we've locked in. So I wanted you to be aware of that. Again, that's something you should be very proud of. But when we had all of the documentation ready to move forward with the sale and distribute that to the bidders, we've obviously working on that over a couple of month timeframe and watching interest rates throughout that process. We did have record low interest rates at this time last year, but then shortly after the presidential election, we saw some upward pressure on interest rates and a little bit concerned as to what would happen during 2017. Would that continue upward, and we would move out of what we consider a low interest rate environment? Fortunately, when you look at where we're at today, interest rates have been higher 96.43% of the time for the last 30 years. So only for a very small period of time have interest rates been lower, and I would still say this is an extremely favorable time to lock in financing for improvement projects. We have had some volatility this year. We watched interest rates at the early part of this year were higher than where we are today. We saw some improvement in interest rates throughout the spring. Late June, early July, we saw some upward pressure on interest rates in the taxable market, which obviously this is a taxable bond issue. The 10-year treasury moved up .23% or 23 basis points over about a couple of week period, and we were concerned that that trend was starting right before the sale of the city's bonds. But the good news is that the bond market reversed course last week. We had an extremely good week in the bond market. Interest rates came down by about 10 basis points, and you look at where we're at today compared to where we were really when we started this, working on this issue roughly three months ago, interest rates are lower by about .13%. So a little bit higher than where we were last year, but still very good interest rate environment, very good bond market, and you can see that in the interest rates that we received. The bid tabulation form, we did receive three bids, Commerce Bank, Northland Securities, and Robert Baird. The bids ranged from 3.388% submitted by Commerce Bank to a high of 3.61% submitted by Robert Baird. And quite frankly, all of those were very good bids. We would have been happy with any of those interest rates compared to some of the rates we had been looking at. We were, as we work with the city administration on developing the plan of finance, we're intentionally conservative on our interest rate estimates because if rates do continue upward, we want to make sure that we still have some cushion in terms of your expectations on what the annual payments would be. But when I look back at some of those preliminary numbers we prepared, we had interest rate estimates ranging from 4.01% to 4.53% on this issue. And again, seeing that volatility and upward pressure on rates, we wanted to be conservative. But the 3.38% is about .62% lower, or even .9% lower than some of those early estimates. And that translates on a 15-year bond issue, for $1,150,000, the interest rate reduction compared to what we were estimating is about $101,005 less than some of those prior estimates. So that's hopefully good news for the city and the taxpayers. The other thing too, and if you have the bid tabulation form in front of you and you look at some of the detail, you'll notice that we allowed the bidders in submitting their bid and factoring their bid to take their compensation either in the form of a discount of the purchase price. So in other words, they could pay the city 99% of the principal amount of the bonds and take a compensation of up to 1% for their fee, and then reoffer the bonds to investors, or they could buy the bonds at par or 100% from the city, or even pay a premium, and then generate their compensation in terms of the price at which they resell bonds to the investors. And the reason I point that out and get into that level of detail is that the Commerce Bank bid not only had the lowest interest rate, but they also chose not to opt for the discount purchase price. So they paid you the full 100% of the principal amount of the bonds, but then even on top of that, they chose to pay a premium. And a bidder will oftentimes pay a premium, which helps improve their average interest rate and how competitive their bid is. So not only did they pay you the $1,150,000 and not take the discount, they paid an additional $7,565.60. And that's good news because not taking a discount and paying the premium gives you more dollars to operate with inside of the project fund for the construction of the improvements. So we wanted to give bidders the flexibility to submit their most competitive bid, but quite honestly, we were hoping that we would see one with a premium, just like we receive from Commerce, and actually have favorable interest rates, and that's exactly what we received. We did, I do want to point out, we did only receive three bids, and I know on some of the prior sales for the city, it's common to see three to five to sometimes even more than five bids, six or seven, you know, is not uncommon. But that's not a reflection on the city or this issue. We've had quite a few competitive sales this year where we've had less bidders than we expected, and I think some of the firms are telling us that they're having difficulty in finding investors that want to invest in bonds. And so the reduced appetite from some of the investors has caused some of the bidders to not submit bids. But three bids and the interest rates we received is a very good outcome. The rest of the report or the debt service schedules that I had shared with the city earlier today, and then also in the blackbound handout that I gave each of you prior to the meeting, we show the uses of funds, and that includes the $7,565 paid to the city, which that results in an additional $19,065 of project construction funds, over and above what we were expecting in terms of if we had a situation where we had no premium and someone took a discount. So we were very pleased with that. And then, again, the average interest rate, as you'll see in some of the calculations, 3.388629 is the average interest rate submitted by Commerce Bank, and we have verified the accuracy of that bid, and it is correct, and we would recommend that you accept their bid for the sale of the bonds. But at the start of the discussion, I had mentioned that we actually had better results than expected, and when you think about some of the information I shared, we had S&amp;P affirmation of the city's AA rating, which we were very pleased with that, and you should, again, be very proud of that. We had far better interest rates than we expected, which results in much lower interest expense for the city and the taxpayers. We have more funds available for construction, and we actually have a lower cost of issuance or financing cost from when we had started. So happy to answer any questions you have, but overall, this seems to be a very good result for the city and the PBC, and hopefully you're pleased with the results of the sale.
I very much appreciate your comments, and I think we should all be proud of where we stand today. And with that understanding, Mr. Mayor, I would move to accept the low bid from Commerce Bank of Kansas City, Missouri, for the purchase of Series A 2017 Public Building Commission revenue bonds with net interest costs of $384,282.59 and a total interest rate of 3.388629%, as recommended by the city of Andover financial advisor, Piper Jaffrey.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by CR and a second by Sherry to accept the low bid from Commerce Bank as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
Madam President, I just wanted to comment on one thing Greg said. He discussed it some, but I know he had to do some extra work to make sure we got these bids. He's explained to me that some other cities have just gotten one or two bids, and this time it's not a reflection certainly on the city of Andover. I know early 10, 15 years ago, it was because our overlapping debt and our direct debt was so high. This time, it's just the bond market in general and the number of bidders out there. So I just think, you know, we as staff probably take for granted that we're always going to sell our bonds very easily, but right now, even though interest rates are low, I think it takes a little bit more work on the part of the financial advisor and everyone else involved in it to make sure we get good rates.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. Moving on to item 4.2, where we have the bond resolution authorizing funds. I don't think we need any further discussion, or do we?
Be delighted to answer any questions you have. This authorizes the lease. If you'd like to answer any questions you have, this authorizes the lease of the amphitheater to the city, the issuance of the bonds upon the terms Greg just discussed.
Okay.
Madam President, Chairman, I move to adopt the bond resolution authorizing and providing for the acquisition, construction, and equipping a municipal amphitheater and related appurtenances, authorizing and providing for the issuance of the commission's taxable revenue bond, Series A, 2017, and the aggregate principal amount of $1,150,000 for the purpose of paying a portion of the costs they are owed.
Okay. We have a motion by Caroline and a second by Sherry to adopt the bond resolution as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Now, we've concluded our business, so we can adjourn and return to the city council meeting with a motion.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. A motion by Sherry, second by Caroline, to adjourn the PBC meeting and return to the council meeting. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries, and we are adjourned. Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. I think we're just down to member items, right?
Yep.
So we're not doing the executive session at the end?
Nope. We already did it all. So no other executive session is necessary. Do you have any member items?
I do not. No member items.
CR.
No items.
Chris.
No items, sir.
Caroline.
I hate to break the record, so no items.
You do it every time.
Not every time.
Staff have anything else?
I do.
Stick around and sign the, sign the, yeah?
No, we just closed the election next Tuesday.
Yes.
The candidacy on the council. Voting hours are, I'm sure they're posted on the website. I know they're on Facebook.
We also have early voting.
I don't know where that is.
Early voting's Friday, right?
Early voting is happening right now at the Butler County Courthouse because they have machines in the hallway that say for Andover Special Election. So I saw them with my eyes. You can go vote now at Butler County Courthouse.
You gotta go to Butler County. When's the regular election, Tuesday?
Yes, 6:00 AM to 7:00 PM, and it's the regular voting places. If you look north of Central, you vote at the Methodist Church. If you live south...
Is it August 1st?
Vote at the Catholic Church.
Right, that's correct. August 1st.
Tuesday, August 1st.
There is only one item.
One item.
Valid, yes. Is this, is that maybe your candidate sitting?
Mr. Schneider has actually declared his candidacy for the position on that ballot, yes.
Well, I don't want him to feel bad if there's low turnout because what I've been hearing from people is, you know, why vote? We're not negative, but that they know what the outcome will be. So I don't want him to be discouraged. We always have low turnout, but don't be discouraged by that.
It's going to be interesting because this is the first time we've switched from spring elections to fall elections and have this primary, and the goal was to get more people to vote. And I'm going to be surprised if that really comes to fruition. I think it's more dependent on what's on the ballot than when you have the election, but we'll see.
You disagree with our state government? Is that what you're saying?
I think that's what he said.
Well, I mean, if there was actually something to vote, I mean, there is no, you know, like if there were three names running for one position, you might get a better turnout. But when you have no race, it's...
But when you have state and federal races, there's so much more money that is poured into advertising than local government races. And again, that's, it's what's on the ballot, not per se when you have the election, in my opinion.
Oh, yeah, I agree with you.
That said, it is on the website, and early voting is July 28, from noon to 7:00 PM, July 29, from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM, and that is at St. Vincent de Paul, right here in Andover. That's early voting.
So will...
You can vote Friday and Saturday?
Yes.
For early voting at St. Vincent de Paul?
Yes, sir.
So will the new candidate, the winning candidate, join us in our August meeting?
Yes.
I believe so.
Okay.
Well, we'll swear him in.
Okay.
Okay, anything else?
We'll adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Stick around and sign the budget, please.